And Kevin.
Here.
Oh. The hearing will be. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Look, I'm George from Jesse. And I'm. Also. And we own. Okay, great, thanks. I'm gonna follow the same.
We're having food.
Yeah. But we're here today regarding the visit club, which is the venue over at Tackley Square. As an overview, we want to just, we want to speak with you about the following. The fact that the venue has no outdoor space associated with it. And as such, it needs some back requirements. The venue's been carefully designed to meet all requirements, including those related to location, building standards, parking, public safety, utilities, and everything. Furthermore, the space will be less stressful on the town's infrastructure. The customers will likely visit for a short while with no spillover into nearby areas. Customer space in venue measures approximately 700 square feet. And the fire marshal has declared 37. On May 9th in 2024, the town's historic district commission reviewed and approved the Mystic Club exterior signage, which currently already hangs outside of it. The new signs that were approved are essentially like replacements of the venue's previous signs. On this next page, you see a photograph of the venue itself and a copy of the approval that we received on this line. So anyway, the it's it's unit 1A, it's essentially essentially kind of a basement. Okay, the door is outside, we kind of like go down into a basement. This factory square was previously occupied by Barley Brewery. I don't know, are any of you familiar with it?
Yep.
Yeah. So it was, it used to be. It's a nano brewery. It was a nano brewery, a taproom bar, a gallery, a retail space. And it operated for over seven years. And the guy who ran, he was a master brewer and he ran an entire brewery in there, efficient having a taproom. It maintains several industrial sized brewing tanks and a complete production system. Tight quarters producing about 1,000 barrels a year, a year. Various items for sale hung on its walls and merchandise was placed throughout. Additionally, Barley had maintained outdoor space in Factory Square's green area where customers would gather. So he was. Familiar with Factory Square and in fact they have a green area. Today, it's for the most part, I think it's all milestone. At the time, when Drew was there, he actually had his own allocated space and was able to use it for business. So like we said earlier, we're Tim and George. I'm a lawyer, so work. And as a marketing executive, and we're both full time, year round residents. It's walking distance to the club, to the venue, so it's great for us. We like that. We're part of the community and we bought Barley had brewery from the previous owner's right with the assistance of our mystic lawyer, Sarah Maria. But she, I guess, helps various folks who are doing similar things as we are. As residents of Mystic, we observed that there was an interest creating a place that was different from the others. Where the rich tapestry of craft beer comes to life. So we're beer aficionados and we're, even though we're not gonna be brewing any beer on the location, we still only want to sell craft beer. Essentially the same thing that Drew sold, which was craft beer in a small selection of craft wine, craft cider. That's for the most part, that was all it's gonna be. And we're not gonna have any merchandising that Drew had. The Mystic Club will be open year round. It's not just designed to be for tourists, it's designed for the entire community. And in fact, that's what we expected, this could be open year round. Writing consistent gathering spot for the neighborhood and visitors during all four seasons. Our intended hours are very similar to the ones that are in the factory square and post street. We are committed to being active members of Mystic community and already working closely with the Chamber of Commerce and others to give back by offering comfortable space for everyone. But we designed it to complement and enhance Mystic's historic downtown area. Style of the space maintains the character of a regional building deserving its birth aside. We have chosen interior for impressions that reflect Mystic's colonial heritage. Essentially, it's the same space as what Drew had, except the brewery's gone. And that space with a similar type of art. There's soft lighting, comfortable bench seating and USB ports throughout to create a space where people want to hang out. There's bench seating. Previous owners did little investments in the place and so we, we've done, we'll try to make cleaning up and. We've invested in state of the art rock wool noise cancelling, fire resistant insulation. We've added ceiling soundproofing acoustic tiles. These will certainly enhance the overall customer experience while minimizing potential disturbance to our neighbors by preventing noise from escaping the premises, also creating a more whole atmosphere. Customers can enjoy conversations without raising their voices. We're committed to being good neighbors while providing the experience for everyone. Importantly, all activities are confined to the interior. We don't have an outside space at all, so everything will on this next page, when we first, when we first got the venue, we hired a local architect. Your friends deal here with. Yeah. We'll be in our house as well. And then our house. I knew lots of projects. And he actually did a diagram for showing what the previous owners had, and that's what this is. And you'll see on this next slide that it's almost exactly the same with three basic differences. Although this one looks a lot messier because we've written all over it.
That's why. Should go scratching.
You'll see that the brewery which occupied this area, it's all, it's all gone, all the all the industrial equipment that was there. He had huge, we still own, they're in storage, so it's huge. So we took it out a lot from there and now that is open. We built, the other thing that's different is that we've added a bathroom. So now there's a men's and women's bathroom. And then lastly, we improved the flow and infrastructure for emergency purposes. So we and outdoor area that's easy to walk through and then go outside, that's the emergency exit that way. And we have a bright signage and we've tried to make it as safe as possible. As for those of you who were there before, it was kind of, there was a lot of things in a lot of places and it wasn't easy to walk through. So we've tried to open it up as much as possible. So on the next page, the location size of the site are appropriate for the orderly development of the area. We're not proposing any changes to the building's location, height, size, anything on the outside. The Mystic Club will maintain historic character wied by the factory square. We anticipate similar or reduced traffic and parking man compared to the previous brewery operation. Most patrons are likely to walk from nearby homes or lodgings, reducing the impact on local traffic and parking. As a factory square tenant, seven parking squats are allocated. The Barley has used required routine. He used, the previous owner used to have routine visits from various third parties. Including brand delivery trucks, machine maintenance workers, candy material providers, waste removers, and also distributors who come and get that because of Drew. Not only sold, not only didn't produce American beer for the actual venue, he actually produced beer for other locations. But for example, he had a deal with Redwood Sticks. For other restaurants where he produced beer for them, so it wasn't just for the venue. So he had, the operation basically point bars a day. If you run it as a brewery. And as a cap. On this next page, you'll see the map of downtown Mystic. That's this right here is obviously the factory, we happen to be right here on the corner. Which is nice for those of you who haven't seen it, it's really, it's kind of, it's very, it's an ideal place for just walking, easy to walk change. And we're lucky because it has, it has really cool, some really cool existing features, like for example, on you know, as a result, as a result of the fact that it's on the corner, obviously for emergency purposes, easy for like a fire engine or an ambulance to come to go directly drive up, right to the front door. In addition though, there is, I don't know if you know, a bright toxic tree, there's a little stationary, there's a parking spot where the Mystic police actually sit, I think it's and so, and that's what we think is a great thing. And they're right there within, within your shot. Also, there's a fire box, right? If you walk right outside the front door, if you turn left, it's like within your feet, there's a fire box as well. The existing street network is adequate to serve our use. We anticipate a decrease in traffic because we want to operate brewery and the and we also are, we expect it will be depending more on locals to frequent the venue as opposed to having visitors. But we think it's more about walking. The Mystic Club utility use will be less than the previous brewery. Now that water, electricity, maintenance services and moisture. And just lastly to complete, we believe that our proposed use aligns with goals and objectives outlined in conservation, development, our proposed use deserves the character of the existing commercial space while enhancing the community sense of peace. So. We receive included package. Go to the community. Five days closing. As. Establishments. Well, outdoor patio, there is that vegetable buffer that satisfies regulation there, I think it's 35, 50. Existing, also their location provides a little bit more longer. Mercy. Their parking requirements upstairs, that the allocation.
That's makes these turn off. But I just want to note Shannon is letting me know she's having a really hard time hearing this. Definitely you speak into your.
Anyone on the other push?
That's a good idea. I saw him to a brewery in California, similar, but they actually do their own VR planes. It was really small, okay, just over the garage doors. So it's never going to look any more louder than what you're doing, but it sounds like you did your homework.
Who won on?
Yeah, if there's anyone who wants to address this. Virtually, raise your hand if you want to address the question.
I don't have any. Waiting, which was better than brewery. Pretty similar kind of things next to each other. Since you're showing us the floor plan, I'll get to comment on it.
Yeah.
Never seen that before.
So we're doing neutral gender of bathroom, west toilets, and then the others. We're trying to make the most.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was. I have a question. Just want to get off the record. So you gave us a petition. 25 signature.
Yeah.
Are we having requirements? Do we have any requirements? It looks looks like there's 25 people in the United States of America. And it was, because you have on there who they're from.
Yeah.
And there's, it doesn't matter, local and everybody else. So. That's. Agree that this is an idea.
But they worked towards their.
And if that's what, yeah, the idea is to force it.
Yeah. Yeah, oh yeah, that's a good point, that's a good point. Oh, I'm sorry.
But so you'll still have some deliveries, but nothing like their performance. Trucks outside.
One question actually. I had a first staff. I thought we had a, we were making it a practice through the years to try to do the hours of operation, early consistent.
Almost anywhere you look. And I noticed, I was wondering, I thought 10 o'clock was a cutoff time, but maybe I'm not.
For patios, that's outside patio.
That was outside, so we didn't do that.
Only thing in the regulations.
Because Barleyhead was 10 o'clock.
That was pre 2019 regulations and there were special permits associated with that. That actually put time limits on it. That's right.
That was because of entertainment?
No, I don't think so.
No.
No, I think it was, it was sort of a standard practice of the zoning commission at that time.
It was 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
Just because we used to have a lot of public input too, I would say much more so than at first. So is it true that any business there can almost have any hours they want or what are we?
I mean, this is a special permit, right? So you do have.
The other special permits, we made a big deal.
And right, and you, if you choose to limit their hours of operation, you can do that with a special permit.
Right, I mean, granted, this one is an interior business and it's unlikely people are gonna be outside. This kind of establishment being loud, but that is possible. But have we given more than a 10 o'clock type limit to other businesses then?
Because I. So I don't think since the adoption of the 2019 regulations, you've imposed any kind of limit on interior operations. It's only been on outside just because of, you know, the impact on the neighborhood.
All right, okay. That's all I had.
Do you want to ask Kevin first since he's seated?
No, it doesn't make me.
So are you guys retaining the brewing equipment and brewing for yourself in a different location or are you buying from?
It's in storage and we're gonna sell it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's already out there.
So but you're, are you buying from like local brewers still or, yeah, okay. Okay, and then this display is that remaining display, are you planning on converting that to more like seating space in the future?
That's gonna remain displaced.
Just display, okay. Thank you.
Kevin, do you have any?
I just have a couple, I have a couple of comments. First, I wanted to thank the applicants because even though we understand this is a two part process, they took the special permit and they answered the specific questions of what is in a special permit. I thought that was very, very well done. So that's my first point. My second point though is of course, we continue to add up in a non-algorithmic fashion as far as the parking at Mystic Art Association. So it's not again. This in permit in any way, but at some point, as a town, we have to address that more aggressively. That's all Mr. Share.
I guess there no other issues, does anyone have any concerns? With getting the information out so we could close the
Nope.
public hearing tonight? See if we can have any objections to closing the public hearing. So I'll make a motion and close the public hearing.
Second that.
Spec 24005, second. Any discussion on the motion? So vote on the motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you want, vote Kevin?
Aye.
Okay, so motion is carried unanimously. Public hearing is now closed.
So we had had a request to move the Colonel Ledger Estates update up to right now, just so that these folks can make it home in a timely fashion. They're, they live quite far away, so it's, I let them know I'd ask.
Does anyone have any objections to changing your business? Okay, so we'll go right down to the update on Colonel Ledger's. They, I don't know if staff wants.
Yeah, I will, I'll just, I'll just briefly go over what was in your packet. And then the contractor Dave Beebe will just go ahead and update from, from there. So in your packet, there was an email from the town, the Public Works Inspector outlining what work has been done. And they are still waiting. Basically, the things they are waiting on is energizing one of the streetlights and getting a plan together to complete the recreation area. Sidewalks are in the the sidewalk along Colonel Ledger Highway is now in and, and final grading will be done soon. Is it done? Okay, great, excellent. Driveway aprons have been replaced. Public Works has agreed to allow the existing sidewalks to remain at four feet rather than five, given that the Deerfield subdivision has four foot walks and it will limit the impact on the folks who are living out there. And then there's the street tree issue that a number of folks, most folks have already landscaped their, their yards. This has been going on for quite some time and don't want to have trees installed, so we're, we're working through that. I think that's it and Dave, if you want to like give them a brief overview of where you're at.
Yeah, we just state your name and address.
David Beebe?
I don't know if you think that's.
No, we're good now. We're, yeah, we're good now. The setting was.
It sounds, it sounds much better, everything, so thank you. All right, so as you stated, everything that was, that's been completed. I do have a work order in, in play with Eversource for the streetlight. They have to come on and give us access to the, to the conduit. So I have to wait for a call or a date, but that the work order actually have here. The playscape, we're still, we're waiting for approval. Actually, I apologize because I thought you got it, you were in the email. I have a new plan. But I'll email it to you. So I have it with the wall, the fence, everything.
Yeah, please do.
So when I looked at it today, as I was printing it, I realized that it wasn't sent to you. So I apologize for that, I thought you had it. So the playground, like I said, we're, we've, we've been able to, with this plan, it's not gonna be as big as proposed, but it's not gonna be 1,450 square feet. So again, you'll get that plan. So all that will come into play. The access road behind the playground, there was an error and it was put in the conservation easement. So that's been removed off the property of lot five as requested. And one of the next things we'll be doing is correcting that and putting it in place. We need to do the removable barrier that will be done. The level spreader behind the playground will be done when we do the wall, I mean, do the, do the road. The access road behind the cul-de-sac has been they're not gonna do that or the level spreader there. The open space on north side of Deerfield Ridge Drive, there's a stone wall that calls for 75 linear feet. And as I look at the plan, it shows me the dimensions, but there's two sets of dimensions and it doesn't state if both need to be done. And it doesn't state a width or height, so I just, I need that information. And I went through with, with the surveyor today. Surveyor today on the plan and we can't, but that, that's why I think you, whoever did this up. Looked at it and put seventy five feet because they were unsure as well, so we'll have to come to an agreement and then we can build that wall. Let me see where else. The sidewalks and ramps, all the concrete is done. At this point, everything's been backfilled. We actually weed whacked the road. And, and cleaned all that up and put topsoil down. Let me see. The Quaker Town Road realignment, that's another issue. I do have everything set for that, but I'm, that's, again, that's another issue at this point. You see the road drainage, the North Culvert, the head wall, everything, the catch basins, everything at Colonel Ledger Highway has been completed. As you stated. So that's all done. And then it says bring power to two light poles, but as we discussed earlier, it's just one and we know why. So. Like I said, once they honor that work order, we'll get there and figure that out. Okay, so it's been very, very productive a couple of months.
Yeah, for sure, definitely. I just wanna add one other item with regards to the realignment of Quaker Farm Road. We have, we expect a, an application to modify the subdivision plan to eliminate that requirement. The owners are here and they've just now dropped off the final. Piece of their application, so you will see that at a, a later meeting.
Okay, so yeah, so we, once we get that light done, because obviously that's a priority. Then it's all minor, fix the road, the level spreader. And the wall and. Little few odds and ends, but that's pretty much it. We're looking at the light at the end of the tunnel.
So this, this, as most of you remember, most, this came about because. The neighbors were. Wanted to finish up the subdivision, you know, they were tired of having construction going on for so long. And in November, the commission notified the bonding company that you were going to be considering calling the bond, right? You'd been given monthly reports sporadically as to the progress. We had hoped to finish up in, in the summer. It's now looking like it will be this construction season.
So, yeah, what's your estimation?
Will, will be done be, before we're plowing. We're, like I said, we're pretty much done. All the big projects are done. If you honor the, the. The motion to eliminate the, the intersection and we're, like I said, we're at the light at the end of the tunnel. It's all minor. Minor touch up and. And that's pretty much it. Clean up and, and that'll be it.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions? On this issue? Okay, so we've got another.
Well, we'll have an application actually to modify the subdivision plan and that'll be the next thing you see.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. Like I said, I just had a few questions about like the wall and things like that, but I can contact.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Over that stuff together.
All right.
But other than that, we're, we're in good shape.
Great.
So, so we can get at least an update by the.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, it's, the Public Works Inspector has now been updating us every week with progress.
He's been out every day. He's been, he's been right on top of it every day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. All good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll, I'll email you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we. Turn to, to the agenda. The next item would be consideration of the public hearing. Spec twenty four zero zero. Five. We do have a motion. Was suggested for us. I don't know if anyone has any comments on, on the motion. Does anyone have any concerns with approving the special permit?
Nope.
No questions? Do you have anything, Kevin?
I do not.
Okay. So I'll make, make a motion then on. Spec twenty four zero zero, zero five drinking establishment in the M D D D. The Misfit Club, twelve Water Street. Motion to approve special permit number twenty four zero zero, zero five, The Misfit Club. Twelve Water Street to allow for a drinking establishment in the M D D zone. Findings and reasons for approval. The commission finds that this application, as condition, complies with zoning regulation section five point one. Dash nine point A drinking establishment. The commission also finds that this application. Complies with the special permit criteria in section nine. Point four dash six of the zoning regulations. In that it does not alter the essential characteristics of the mystic area. Does not cause traffic congestion or safety conflicts. Does not conflict with the purposes of these regulations. And will reasonably minimize. The potential environmental impacts. On adjacent water bodies, including Long Island Sound. Is there a second? Second, it's moved and seconded by hell. Any discussion on the motion? There are none, then we'll vote on. On the motion for moving of the special permit. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Good luck with that.
Yep.
Now we'll turn factory square into the beer capital.
Becomes a destination.
It's gonna be a destination. The buses, Water Street's becoming busy now.
Hmm?
It's good buddy.
Tell me.
It was really sleepy just fifteen years ago.
Yeah, ten years, yeah, even ten years ago.
You had a pizza place and that was.
That was it.
Place.
Yeah.
And the Emporium.
Kind of stone garden place, yeah.
Hmm?
Yep.
I miss the Emporium.
Yeah.
I miss it.
Yep.
We have another bar in the basement, Diet Bar.
Hmm, yeah.
Okay, next item is approval of the minutes. The previous meetings, I'll entertain a motion to approve the August thirteenth.
So.
Moved in, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Does anyone have any corrections? For this, do you have any, Kevin?
I do not, thank you.
I just had one item. Completely editorial. On page six at the very bottom, where you have A S P report and application update says none. I don't know what that means. You can just, I don't. No, or you wanna just add the words.
Just noted or noted, okay, sure, yep.
You know, identified for.
Yep.
No comments, I don't care.
Yep.
It just seems odd. Cause we don't take any action.
Right.
Or if you wanna say no questions.
Sure.
Commission, I don't care, just something. Look, so somebody five years and now a hundred. Or not doing. Okay, next we have public communications. Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight? If you want to, raise your hands. You have none. Okay, we have no special permits, subdivisions, we have received our update. New business applications.
Right, there's just a, a two lot subdivision that's been submitted.
The Summers subdivision. So she can have her father have his own place. Well, that's what it's for. Okay, commission referrals, we have none.
None.
Oh, wow. We'll have time to see the big delays. Next we have commission reports, reported chair, I have none. Does anyone in the commission have anything?
Um, well. I guess I got that email from John Burt about the visiting the.
Oh, yeah.
We all did, I'm assuming I could not make it, but.
We all did.
I don't know.
We were wondering.
We were.
No way you made it.
I'm, is that, was that a meeting? No, okay. And then I did the sexual harassment seminar with Hal.
Yep.
And I got my certificate to prove it.
Yeah, I did that seminar also. And it was an interesting visit. To a newly manufactured home, so newly designed.
Did you go?
Yes, I did.
And so Lauren, so did I.
Yeah. I'd love to see it. I told him, I told John that I'll just set it up separately, but it's very interesting to me.
Was it? Yeah, it started, it starts to blur the line between modular.
Yeah.
And the mobile, whatever we wanna call it, pre manufactured.
I think a manufactured and a mobile home, right, versus a modular.
Right, so and, and that's the only difference is modular, you would have taken one of these things and stacked them up and packed them together. There was a design that way. These are designed to be standalone individual units.
But that design could be stacked. It'd be really interesting. I'm not saying.
I'm not.
No, no, I'm not saying just as is, but seeing to have the bedrooms far apart, the kitchen in the middle. It's kind of an interesting design.
And, and.
To make an apartment out of.
We did hear that there are now two family, two unit mobile homes that are being produced, so.
Right.
Yeah, they're, they're evolving, right? And it's more than just what was, was shown in, in the.
Not really mobile, they're.
No.
They're not really mobile.
No, they're not mobile.
But, but they keep just.
Manufactured.
They're manufactured, but so does, that's true of a modular. They're manufactured inside. In this case, they're absolutely complete when they come to the site as opposed to modular, which does some work to be done. And these are supposed to be standalone, being either duplex or not. They get apparently up to eighty feet and fourteen feet wide, which I've never seen one of those except for when you see a ball move. We have never seen anything like that. But. They are kind of stick built. They're not these aluminum contraptions that we grew up with. But it hasn't been that for a while. These actually look in every way and form, including the ceiling heights and trim. Not the roof heights, but ceiling heights. To a stick built, a small, narrow, stick built house. So I'll give it credit for that. You're still limited by having open space on all four sides of these little houses, which makes the layout. Very inefficient. It makes a suburban sprawl on this little level. Otherwise. That's exactly what it looks like. It's like a, a tiny lebatine.
Well, I think it is very inefficient, yeah, the whole thing, for sure. That's what we saw when we added them all together and it's what, R seven zoning equivalent? By what, what I thought was interesting, the one that we toured, it was actually for sale. And. At the time, it's under nineteen thousand nine hundred and they actually dropped the price fifteen thousand on it.
I thought it was under contract.
Sorry? The one we scored was under contract, but they had another similar one that had just gone up for sale?
No, well, the one here, and I think that's the one we were at. But, and it's pending now. It wasn't before, well, last, I looked at it a few days ago, but. But my, the only thing I thought was. We talk about housing being affordable and that's about as affordable, I think, as you'll find in Groton and yet had to reduce the price on it. You know? I just thought that was pretty interesting. Because it's, if anything, I mean, that's a. I would say, I mean, I know Nick Forlatti is actually a neighbor of mine, but. It's a, it's a nice location in a lot of ways and, you know, convenient to a lot of things. But nonetheless, and here you have something that's brand new and they had to drop the price, I mean fifteen thousand, it's almost ten percent of the price, so.
I think there might be some equilibrium, right? Of how nice these are and, and what the market still is for them, right?
How can you say that? I mean, it's all, it's not enough to say this is a market. I mean, this is just one off, but still. I just, something that cheap, I was like, why didn't it just snapped up or something, you know, given that this area has become so expensive in a lot of ways?
Maybe it comes down to, but do people want to live in a development like that?
Hmm.
And that might be the difference.
Could have to do with financing, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of layers, right?
Well, it's also that, you know, in a way, not owning your land isn't always attractive either, a lot of people.
Exactly, because you have to factor in, but, but like what he was saying, the pad rent.
Yeah, that's right.
That, but then it's that, that kind of neighborhood, that was fairly, most of it was fairly nice compared to some, some. Or parking lots for these things. And this was fairly nice, missing street trees and kind of things and I guess that's where we might even think of getting involved, but. Is that. It looked like a neighborhood to me, but it's. Not. Regulated like a neighborhood. It's regulated like. A parking lot to do what you want in there. For the most part, that's why there's no street trees and no, no playground for the kids, that kind of thing.
I would just be interested to know why. It wasn't snapped up, I think. I mean, it's, it's almost to me, it's a feudal system. Where you have someone who owns your land. And you'll never be able to really have total ownership, like you would a house, for example.
But that goes for a townhouse or a condominium. It's exactly the same.
No, but that's different.
The owner had mentioned that they're not allowed to refuse to renew the lease. As long as you're in good standing, you have right to continue to. Renew your lease. It's not like you're gonna get kicked off necessarily.
But you don't own the land in this case and in a condominium, you have a ownership interest in the whole thing and it isn't like. Then someone says, oh, I own it, so therefore you get to send me a check of six hundred dollars a month for the rest of your life and I, I might raise it and blah, blah, blah.
In a condominium, you don't own the walls outside. You don't own the outside.
I know all that stuff, so.
It's the association.
Yeah.
And I. Just, just for clarity too, there are different models of, of manufactured home parks, right? There are models that are closer to those condominium models or co-op models where there's, no. No, but throughout the country, right?
So Groton is basically the same kind of model.
And throughout, which is that traditional model, right? But there are other models out there that. Try to replicate. You know, joint ownership of the land a little bit more and they can control pad rents or. You know, pool costs together more efficiently.
But then I guess my question is too, why don't we have more condominiums here as we do in other towns? But that's another question. Maybe we'll learn the answer tomorrow.
I think it was interesting because it was brought up last meeting when we spoke about it, about the depreciation. And the, the owner had said that the, the new ones are like retaining their value, right, or not depreciating as quickly?
I mean, they're still depreciating.
They're still depreciating, but not, not as quickly or not as significantly.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's true, because a lot of the prices are really up on it. I mean, if somebody wanted to really make money over the last ten years, they would have bought a bunch of. These units. There was just the, the upside was huge.
I guess there's more money in subscription car services now, car washes now.
That's it. No. No, but when you're going from twenty thousand to a hundred thousand, you know, that's a great payoff, right? And that's where the payoff was, was in mobile home parks. More than on the water, I think. Anyway, that's for what that's worth. My little research.
Thought we put mobile homes at the bottom of the list. I think I stayed. It's interesting about that, though. I was looking at the legal ads recently. In the paper, and one of the beach associations in East Line. Just passed a regulation that was. You could or not allow any metal structures in their area, any metal structures.
Wow.
Which I sort of thought they were trying to say, you can't have a mobile home.
Or maybe a container.
The chassis.
Yeah, yeah.
But what about container, you know, some people live.
That may, that might, yeah, yeah, the containers, yeah.
They fill houses out of steel, so I don't know.
No, I've never seen anything like that, but it's probably because it's a beach association, they might have. All the structures similar to what's existing, because they're usually, they're pretty well. Complete, they're not a lot of land that's available for. But I just thought it was.
Maybe, maybe they've had some bees fanned or, I'm sorry, some architectural great things coming up that are steel and glass. And they didn't wanna have any of that.
Heck, maybe.
Maybe it's just.
I just thought it was.
Sideways way of saying.
I thought it was just going after prefab or, or mobile homes.
But it barely touches these because you, you wouldn't know, except for, as you said, the jassy. Just took it and sat it on top of. A foundation. Wouldn't there run be any metal left?
Yeah, or you could use fiberglass and.
That's true. Like some other material that they don't like.
Okay, anything else? Commissioner Porce, the staff have anything?
We are. Close to scheduling a, a public kickoff meeting for the plan of conservation and development that will be open to the public. We'll have more details at the next meeting.
Well, you do that as a separate, as a special meeting?
Oh, yeah, oh, for sure. And we'll invite, we've got, we're developing a mailing list of folks who are interested in the process. We'll invite them as well as other commissions.
Either in a big conference room or in the senior center?
No, actually, we are looking at Sutton Park, the gazebo, the gazebo that's there. It's in a neighborhood. We're trying to get more input. Um it's in a neighborhood we're trying to get more input from, so. And Sutton Park will be undergoing a, a big renovation probably next year and so there was some synergy there.
It's great idea.
Yeah. Food, we'll, we'll try to have food. Yeah.
Is it, is it open or?
It is.
No, no, the building structure.
Oh, no, it is large. The gazebo is quite large. It is, yeah, yep.
But you don't have. Seven picnic tables under it currently.
Right.
Think you could fit.
But it's outside.
It is, it is.
That's why I'm not.
Yep, so it'll be, yeah, we're gonna try to probably be four thirty-ish because we're losing light um.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but it should be the end of the month or the beginning of next month.
Is it electrified?
It is, but I understand the electricity is, you might have it, you might not, a little sketchy. So, so we will plan for not having it.
Well, you can always get.
You don't want a generator going.
No, we're, yeah, no, no, yeah. I mean, I think that's part of the renovation they're doing, yeah.
There is pushing for more funds.
I think they actually have them. They're, yeah, we have a site plan, a wetland plan in for it and we expect a site plan soon.
I don't think he's doing, doing well on his pickleball.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
Well, he said he didn't have enough people.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Off the record, I mean, it wasn't.
Yep.
Efficiently. So we have nothing else tonight, so except a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Turn second. Second.
Alright, it was, alright. Good night, Kevin.
Thank you, guys. I think Shannon gave the feedback, right, that it started off, you could barely hear, it was very fragmented.
Yep, it, it was an audio setting that was, that was wrong, so, yep.
Life turned good right after that setting was different, so thank you.
Alright, good night.
Good night.
So we can have a good system now.